Would you please join me for a moment on the side of the chair.
The United States of America. Thank you for being here for Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting of the Southwestern City School Board.
Can I give a roll call, please? This is Angelo Steel.
Here.
This is Liskini.
Here.
This is Martindale.
Here.
This is Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso.
Here.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda for October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular school board meeting. Can I get a motion to move that forward? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call. This is Martindale.
Yes.
This is Peterson.
Yes.
This is DeAngelo Steel.
Yes.
This is Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes, moving on to approval of the minutes from the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those?
Yeah. Yes, DeAngelo Steel.
Thank you, Mrs. DeAngelo Steel. I get a second.
Second, Liskini.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskini. Any corrections of those minutes? Do you need none? Roll call. This is DeAngelo Steel.
Yes.
This is Liskini.
Yes.
This is Martindale.
Yes.
This is Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes, our first thing is a public hearing for our school calendars for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year with Mr. Matthew D. Castro.
Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President DeAngelo Steel, member of the Board, Mr. Banks, and of course, Mr. Garcia. I'm Matthew Castro, and I'm here to present the twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar options after several months' preparation and calendar feedback from stakeholders. The calendar is presented, were selected when soliciting feedback from parents, marketing units, O C, S U A, and SWO. Here's the one for twenty-six, twenty-seven for me. So for the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar options, see what's a preference. You will notice that the students start with a three-day week on the nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first of August. There are two full weeks for winter break. Spring break will take place March twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, and students' last day will be prior Memorial Day on May twenty-eighth, which is a Friday. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. For the twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar, option B was a preference. Again, you will notice students start with a three-day week on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth of August. There's a short winter break with eight days off. Spring break runs from March twentieth to the twenty-fourth, and the students' last day is Thursday, May twenty-fifth. The September end of twenty-seven, twenty-eight year earlier than usual to prepare for potential construction needs should opportunity present itself with C C. Any questions about the calendar so far? Presentation, so how do we get here? How does this calendar get made? Couple different ways. So go to the first slide for me. I'm going to have to take into considerations, I'm collecting bargaining considerations. So O C day, which is the third Friday in October, which is coming up this week, is one of those that has to be considered. And then for this week, contract, you'll see some in-service workdays or three additional in-service or workday shall be scheduled with one near the end of the first regrading. There's things that we have to consider would be taking on for that. Some federal holiday and special considerations. So these are kind of all the dates that we have to plan around. Doing the calendar, so Labor Day, O C Day, elections, Thanksgiving, and those couple of days around it. Christmas and winter break, Year's Day, M L K Day, and then the day traditional after is P D Day, and then President's Day, of course. And then some other things when we're planning the calendar. There's a hundred and seventy-seven students' days for our certificated staff, there are a hundred and eighty-five workdays for the majority of them. Obviously, we want to honor the election feedback where we want those days off in November and May for elections. We don't have school in those days. Anytime you take a day off, you got to put that in somewhere else, right? Obviously, we heard feedback from the last calendar. It's not going to end on a Monday with fun student day, so we made sure we took care of that. Of course, there's always discussion around starting the school year with three days for students or five days for students. And what we've gathered is most people want the three-day smaller week for students. Testing obviously plays into this because once you start getting into the second week of April, that can make a big hole into testing. So we want to make sure our students have consistent testing dates, we're not starting and stopping doing that. We have to plan around the semester marks and then rating period marks. Then, of course, with graduation, you know, we try to plan out as good as, as quickly as possible, but we have to take into consideration getting those venues booked. And then, you know, how we get them booked. Historical schools already have some of their, their dates and times set up. So as soon as we can get those on the books, we'll make sure that everybody knows we can get those out to the public. So some of the parent feedback we did receive, you'll notice that there weren't, there weren't a ton of responses, but this is some of the feedback that we did receive. Some preferences with ending before Memorial Day, someone in the later start in August, but if you put later August, then it pushes it back back Memorial Day. And then, of course, someone an earlier start in August so you can get out before June. So hell balances out though. Staggered starts, again, I'll mention that, that, you know, the shortened first week, so we have the Wednesday start. There's just some differences with that. Semester break, there was some feedback that they would like, people would like our, our spring break to be the same time that maybe other school districts have their spring break for different families and things like that. That's going to be hard regardless, but we tried because Easter falls at a very different time throughout the year. And if there's an interest in fall break, again, I think everybody would love a fall break. If you put a fall, a fall break in there, you either got to start school earlier or you got to end school later. So it's one of those other options. I think people would like to be off right now, but that's going to change a lot of things towards the end of the school year. And then some additional requests for Thanksgiving break off and things like that. You'll see we did this email to all family, the survey was presented in multiple translations, there were social media posts, and then there was on front page of the website. Then our next steps, you know, we have our hearing tonight, we'll have a second one in November seventeenth, and then we voted on for the approval, and then that'll go out to portals, the web calendars, and then building calendars. That kind of wraps up everything. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Matt, just thank you for all the time you guys put into this. I know it's fun. I can't imagine.
My first friend, Mr. Banks, he was like, is that position, is your position still to the calendar?
Of course.
Is there any public feedback on these specific calendars?
Anyone? There we go.
Is eat something that could also be taken into consideration?
Especially during fasting, during Ramadan.
Is eat something that could be taken into consideration, just the one to two days that students tend to miss for that? Because it tends to fall during testing sometimes. I know for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar, it's in February, so that would be less of an issue. I'm just not sure where it falls for this next school year.
Sure. Into.
Yeah, it is taken into consideration. I know the principle of what they have understanding for those students, and I do know it doesn't exclude absence. But as far as having the days and getting off, like you were just mentioning too, when it comes to like Easter and things like that, like it's always hard to schedule for every single holiday. I do know that. I do know the question has come up and they're, you know, well, the working district has to get out all the students without missing, or not being, no penalization will happen for missing.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Matt.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on now to a presentation of our annual financial review and our five-year forecast. Thank you, President Bosso, Vice President DeAngelo Steel, members of the Board. It's a pleasure to go over the two financial reports I'm going to talk about today. The first one is the annual financial review. It basically recaps what happened in our last fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And then the second report I'll go over is the five-year forecast. That is more forward-looking, look at where our finance, finances are going throughout the future. So that's the role, that's the role. There you go. Thank you. So overall, when you look at our, where our general, we have general fund revenues and expenses, and then we have other funds. I'm going to talk first about our general fund. Our general fund is where we have our, all our operating expenses for operating our schools. For the most part, state funding makes up roughly fifty percent of the funds that we receive in our general fund. Thirty-seven percent comes from property taxes, and the other thirteen percent comes from other sources. Other sources could be interest revenue, could also be we have some, another big source that we have is the T I F S that we have around here. We actually receive, we're a whole harmless district where we receive the property, property owners pay what they, what our taxes actually. And those go through as other sources to us. They're not counted in as real estate until that T I F S expires. So the breakdown is such. One thing that I'm concerned about is our, is our state funding. I'll talk a little bit more about that in the five-year forecast, but just want to put that out there that you know that fifty percent is funding from state sources currently. The next slide. Our general fund expenditures primarily are salaries and benefits, and most of those salary and benefits come from instruction. As you can see from the functions on this, on this slide, that we have roughly seventy-three cents of every dollar going to instruction. So most of our dollars are going towards right in the classroom, right to the students that we serve. We have another fourteen cents going from every dollar going to transportation and maintenance. That's, that's another big cost item that we have. And then we do, I always want to point out, our administrative costs are eight point eight percent of our overall general fund budget. Recently, the state legislators put on a cap that they said anybody over fifteen percent would be not allowed, and we're well under fifteen percent. If you look at us statewide, we're well under the state average as far as administrative costs go. Moving on to the next slide, talk a little bit about expenditures from other fund sources. Seventy percent of our budget is in our general fund. So what I just talked about, seventy percent comes from our general fund. The other thirty percent comes from other funds. Primarily, the biggest, one of the bigger line items that is actually in the classrooms is our special revenue funds. Those are state and federal grants, our Title I, our I D E A funds, our Head Start. You can see that's about twenty percent of our budget comes into those. We also have capital projects of about ten percent. That's our permanent improvement levy that was passed in two thousand and seven. That brings about four to five million dollars in a year. We, if you, if you go around our buildings, you'll see that the roofs are well maintained, the parking lots are well maintained. Everything is, I really put kudos out to our, our property services coordinator, Mark Meadows. He's done a great job keeping these buildings looking great. I know we talked a little bit about the appearance of our building at the last meeting. So you can see that about ten percent goes into our capital projects. We also have debt service of about twelve percent. That's where we pay for the mortgages for the buildings that were built, our elementary buildings, the thirteen new elementary buildings, the four new middle schools. Also Franklin Heights High School, all those buildings came at a no new millage, with a no new millage bond issue. So taxes have been increased what, over what people are already paying. We're able to access fifty percent of the money from the state of Ohio. So we have a small portion of our other funds going to pay off those, those bonds that were issued to build those buildings. Internal service and agency funds, you can see those are kind of bigger pieces of the pie. Those are, we are self-insured through our health insurance. That's a pretty big portion of, of funds that go. So we have money set aside, premiums are paid by our employees and the board, and those funds go into a self-insurance fund to pay future claims. So that's a pretty decent size of our internal service fund. Also, we have a pretty decent-sized amount that goes in for pensions, same way. We withhold the money, it goes in the internal service fund, and then we pay the bill to pension systems. Our enterprise fund of roughly eight and a half percent, that's our food service program for the most part. Lisa Hammer does a great job with our food service department. We are not transferring funds over to the food service department. A lot of school districts in the state of Ohio have to subsidize our food services. Here, we run a pretty tight ship, and she does a great job over there, and I always want to commend her for that. Any questions on other funds or general fund so far? I'll move to the next slide. Yeah, the next slide, this is just for informational purposes only, there's not, I'm not saying that this is good or bad. It's just the facts and figures of where we stand in comparison to Franklin County. Currently, we are, if you look at our, all of our levies, which include operating levies, P I levies, permanent improvement levies, and bond issues. We are currently ranked fifteenth out of sixteen schools in Franklin County. If you look at just our operating mills, we're also at fifteen. And if you look at what we spend per pupil, we rank thirteenth in the, in the county. As you can see, that little blue line designates the state of Ohio. The average expenditure per people in the state of Ohio is roughly a thousand fifty dollars more than we spent here in Southwestern. If we were to spend that on our twenty-one thousand kids, that's roughly twenty-two million dollars more than we would be spending. Just given the facts and figures on that. One thing I would like to point out too, if you look at the state of Ohio in that middle column, or talk about effective operating mills for Southwestern City, we're at twenty point eight-three operating mills. That's what the funds that go into our general fund to operate our schools. The state of Ohio for the class one residential is, the average is twenty-five point six-six. So there, again, about five mills, a little bit less than five mills more than what Southwestern currently levies our, our taxpayers. That twenty-five point six-six mills at a state average level includes, there's been a lot of talk, if you've been reading in the paper, about emergency levies, permanent levies, different types of levies. That includes all types of levies. Southwestern specifically does not have any emergency levies, all our levies are permanent levies in nature. So I just wanted to point that out. Any questions on the Franklin County comparisons or the state comparisons? All right, so let's move to our five-year forecast. So here is a graph that designates our, blue is our revenue, yellow is our expenditures, and our cash balance is the line. You can see that line is, is going down. Before you get too nervous, I just want to point out, remember last year, at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of June, there was a lot of rhetoric going around on the state level about a, putting a set aside for how much districts could, could hold back. We have thoughtfully and carefully saved our money so we can weather financial storms in the future. So to do that, we had to set aside about a hundred million dollars into a separate fund to take out of our general fund so the state didn't take that away. Now luckily, that, that was all vetoed, and that didn't happen. But that veto could go away, it's still in play, it could happen all the way through December of two thousand twenty-six. So the funds are still in safekeeping, and we have those set aside for, for just such an event. But what I do want to point out is, is we have a situation in our, in our, in our cash balances that we are spending a little bit more than we're bringing in right now. And to give you the main reason, I want to go to the next slide. So here's the main reason. These are, these are state fair school funding dollars. This is, this is the dollars that we receive from the state of Ohio for fair school funding. A few things I want to point out about fair school funding is that the, the cost inputs, the base costs were not increased in the last budget, the budget that started this year and goes into next year. So there was no increase in our fair school funding dollars. And one thing that also offsets our fair school funding is that when increases in property values go up, it takes into account your, the value of the properties that are going up. But it doesn't take into account how much you actually receive. So what it does is it messes with something called our state share percentage. Our state share percentage decreases as our values go up. The problem with that is that as our values go up, mill rate goes down. That can be a little confusing to people. So what, how to explain this best? I will tell you that before reappraisal, we had twenty-nine point three effective mills. After reappraisal, our mill rate went down to twenty point eight mills. So that's almost, that's over eight mills difference. We decreased by eight mills. So how property taxes are collected is you multiply the assessed value by the mill rate. So because of House Bill nine-twenty, making sure that districts' taxes wouldn't go out the roof, if values go up, mill rate goes down, and it can only go down to twenty mills. It's as far as it can go down, so we're pretty close to that amount. And that's a lot of the rhetoric you hear right now, why taxes are such an issue. There are many districts in the state of Ohio that are at the twenty-mill floor. When their values went up significantly, their taxes went up significantly. That, that, I believe, is, is kind of a problem. I do agree with that being a problem. I'm hopeful that legislators, and I'm going to be speaking with as many as I can, I'm hopeful that they can understand that districts like ours, and how it affects our state funding, and how it also affects our property taxes. It's not, the system isn't working correctly, so we need to talk to them about that to try to get that all. So for instance, our, our increase in class one residential in value was fifty-two percent during the reappraisal. So that fifty percent of value decreased our effective operating mills, so we collect about the same amount of money. And some people will come to me, and I've had people come to me saying that, hey, everybody's paying more money. Well, how that really works, reappraisal is really a reallocation of how property taxes are paid. Some people during reappraisal, these people never come to me, some people during reappraisal, their taxes go down. Some people who's, and during reappraisal, their taxes go up. And, and how that works is if, if fifty percent is the average increase in property tax, or property value, if my home goes up sixty percent, I'm going to pay a little bit more. If the, if my value of my home goes up forty percent, then I'm going to pay a little bit less. It really redistributes who pays what. So I know that's kind of confusing for some to, to see, but I, I can show you example after example where people's property taxes actually went down, even though their value went up. So many conversations need to be had at the state level, and I'm, I've been in connection with a lot of those, those folks, and will keep in connection with a lot of those folks, and trying to work through this issue. I do, like I said, I do have sympathy, and I do understand that if you're at the twenty-mill floor and your values went up significantly, and your taxes went up significantly, that's not what we want to do to our taxpayers for sure. Expenditures have been increasing. Go to the next slide. So increases in assessment of state funding, that, that's an issue that we need to address. Property taxes that just, as I said, the increases don't necessarily, necessarily mean that we're getting increased revenue. Expenditures have been increasing. We, we're spending less than the state average, but we are seeing inflation, we're seeing how that's hitting our expenditures. Cash balance have beginning, are beginning to decline, and so it's going to be more important than ever that we talk to our legislators about a, a real funding plan that will work for us. And also, we're going to have to, you know, look hard at our own budgets and examine where we can, you know, make some changes and do some things internally to try to save money in the future. So there, there's a lot going on with our five-year forecast right now. I'm hopeful, again, we have time, we've, we have money, we save money on purpose to other rainy days if they come, and the rainy day is here and it's coming. And so we just need to be able to pivot when we need to and be able to make changes when we need to. So I wanted to provide you that and answer any questions you may have at this time. I wish I had better news. I wish I had better news for you. You're so speechless. I think you, when you explained it to us, you did a great job. I appreciate it so much, having you. Moving on now to Board reports, any Board reports? The non-public participation in items, which we do not have any of those tonight. We'll go right to student and staff achievement with Miss Liskini.
Thank you, President Bosso. We're receiving under student and staff achievement for October twenty twenty-five. Southwestern City School student achievements, we want to say congratulations to Jonah Wiggum, a second grader at Prairie Norton Elementary School, on being named a twenty twenty-five National Math Star. Jonah is one of only one hundred and two students nationwide recognized for exceptional math skills, problem-solving abilities, and academic promise. As part of this honor, he will receive long-term academic support over the next ten years to help nurture his talents and open future opportunities in STEM field. Excellent job. Last month, thirteen Southwestern City School musicians were named to the twenty twenty-five O M E A All-State Ensembles. From Central Crossing High School, the All-State Choir members are Noah Abbey and Lydia Alexander. From Grove City High School, the All-State Choir members are Lily Rosita, Jackson Nelson, Maria Retia. All-State Band members, Alex New, he plays the bass trombone, Chance Swayze, the Youth Fomeum, and Noah Mastelak, I think I got it right, plays the trombone. The All-State Orchestra members are Colin Nicholson, trumpet, and Nolan Gross plays the trumpet. From Westland High School, the All-State Choir members are Owen Cruz, Salomia Ontiuk, and Maxwell Cash. Under staff achievements for this month, we want to say congratulations to the Southwestern City Schools' transportation team of Ian Cormack, Alex Merton, Pam Gilly, and Laura Price. The team earned third place in the Central Region Ohio School Bus Driver Safety Rodeo on Saturday. The rodeo is a skills competition that tests drivers on precision, safety, and professionalism through a series of real-world driving challenges. I feel like this team won last year also. I know Ian was on the team last year, so if you see Ian, give him a big high five because he's amazing. And congratulations to three Southwestern teachers who were recently recognized as OCC Championship Coaches of the Year. Jamie Ramirez from Central Crossing High School, Mitch Sloman from Grove City High School, and Chance Van Gundy of West Franklin Elementary. He is a Dublin Kaufman coach. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on now to items for action under fiscal and operational management. Mrs. Peterson.
All right, I have seven items I am going to be bringing forward. Item number one is our revised permanent appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. You're going to see X one. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations. Item two is investments and financial statements for September twenty twenty-five. You're going to see X two and X three. It is recommended that in accordance with section one three five point one four of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approves September investments and cash position report for the month of September of twenty twenty-five. Item number three is payment of bills. You're going to see X four. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of September twenty twenty-five. Item four is donations. You're going to see X five. We received an amount of total donations in six thousand thirty-two dollars, and the district and the Board continues to express our gratitude and appreciation to our donors who continue to support Southwestern. Item number five is authorization to pay bills in accordance with section five seven oh five point four one, Ohio Revised Code. You're going to see X six. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for September, which were not processed in accordance with section five seven zero five point four one of the Ohio Revised Code. Item six is approval of students deemed impractical to transport. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the list of students deemed impractical. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the list of students deemed impractical to transport for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented, see X seven. Little background on this one, because I know you all have heard me bring up this list multiple times. The background on this one is we have approved several lists for students that we were aware of at that time. This list is for additional students that have been deemed impractical to transport since the last list was approved. We tend to have students ongoing, coming in or coming out, making changes to move school buildings outside of Southwestern. And so that's why an additional list can be generated since the time we present a previous list. Item number seven, approval of the five-year forecast. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize, approve the five-year forecast as presented, see X eight. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Listany.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. We're going to stay with Mrs. Peterson for fiscal development.
Okay, here we are about facilities. I am bringing forward two. I knew what you meant, Chris, for the facilities. I'm bringing forward two facility items. The first one is approval of the addendum to the lease agreement for the Kingston School Building. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached addendum to the lease agreement with the city of Grove City for the Kingston Building. A little background on this. The current lease expires on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. The parties agreed to extend the lease for the property located at thirty-two twenty-six Kingston Avenue beginning on January one of twenty twenty-six for an additional term of a hundred and twenty months. The lease agreement shall continue to automatically renew for subsequent hundred and twenty-month terms unless, not less than one year prior to the end of the renewal lease for the term either party provides to the other its written notice to terminate. Section two, item two of this amendment, I'm sorry, this amendment, is Section six of the lease is hereby amended to add the following. If landlord needs to use the premises for education, no purposes, they shall provide at least one year notice, okay? Landlord means us, Southwestern City School District. The remainder of the terms and conditions of the lease shall remain in full force and effect. So those are just the three items that's being amended for the lease for Kingston Building. The second item is the approval of the memorandum of understanding for the lease agreement for the Brook Park Middle School Building. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding to the lease agreement with the city of Grove City for the Brook Park Middle School Building. Background on this one. The current lease term for this expires July thirty-first of twenty thirty-two. There is no change to that, okay? Since this lease had began, circumstances had changed so that it is necessary to clarify certain aspects of the lease. One, general provisions. The purpose of this M O U is to clarify certain provisions stated in the lease. This M O U does not alter or amend the lease between Southwestern City School District, Board of Education, and the city of Grove City. Article one for premises. The parties agree that the intent is to remove the existing modular structures on the premises, and this shall be done at the landlord's sole expense, Southwestern expense. Article three, Section five, is maintenance, repairs, improvements, and replacements. Under new lease, the tenant is responsible for repairs, replacement, and improvements to the interior and exterior of the building, including but not limited to the roof. The parties agree to work together to correct leaks due to normal wear and tear to the existing roof structure, with the intent to prolong the life of the existing roof structure through the initial term of the lease. The last section, which is Section eight of Article four, utilities and services. Under the lease, tenant is responsible for payment of all utilities, cleaning, trash services on the premises during the lease term. Due to the change in building space usage for school operations, as shown in Exhibit B one, the parties agree to prorate utilities based on formula originated by the landlord with space use being part of criteria. Tenant agrees to begin reimbursement of utility costs effective December one, twenty twenty-five to the landlord in the amount of twenty-five thousand per year for all utilities, cleaning, trash services on the premises. As you all know now, Brook Park is now also the enrollment center. So that is why this M O U was drawn, so that we ensure fair usage of what the city of Grove City is using to what the district is now using for space in that building. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
Peterson, can I get a second?
Second, Listany.
Thank you, Ms. Listany. Roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Listany.
Yes.
Ms. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Bosso. Yes. Moving on now for items for action under students, schools, and community with Ms. Listany.
Thank you, President Bosso. This evening, under students, school, and community, we have action items. The first one is Jackson Middle School, eighth-grade students to travel to Washington, D.C. This trip is planned for May fifth through the eighth, twenty twenty-six, and students will miss three days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by students and parents. Number two is Grove City High School students to travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. The Grove City Varsity softball student athletes have the opportunity to travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina for participation in the grandstand class. This trip is planned for March twenty-eighth through April fourth, twenty twenty-six, and students will miss zero days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by fundraising students and parents. Number three is Grove City High School N J R O T C students to travel to Indianapolis, Indiana. The N J R O T C students have the opportunity to travel to Indiana for participation in the Area fourteen Drill Championship. This trip is planned for February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, and students will miss one day of school. Trip expenses will be paid by the N J R O T C. Number four, Grove City High School N J R O T C students to travel to Floyd's Knobs, Indiana. They have the opportunity to perform in the N J R O T C Regional Meet. This trip is planned for November seventh and eighth, twenty twenty-five, and students will miss zero days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by the N J R O T C. Number five is Grove City High School students to travel to New York City, New York. The Grove City High School News Broadcast students have the opportunity to travel to New York City to gain real-world experience in broadcast journalism. The trip is planned for March twenty-sixth through the twentieth of twenty twenty-six, and students will miss two days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by the students and parents. Number six, Grove City High School students to travel to Oxford, Alabama, and Davenport, Florida. The Grove City High School Varsity baseball students have the opportunity to travel to Alabama and Florida to play baseball. The trip is planned for March twenty-seventh through April fourth, twenty twenty-six, and students will miss zero days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by fundraising students and parents. Number seven, Grove City High School Wrestling Team to travel to Akron, Ohio. The Wrestling Team students have the opportunity to travel to Akron for a tournament. This trip is planned for January sixteenth and seventeenth, twenty twenty-six, and students will miss one day of school. Trip expenses will be paid by boosters. And number eight, Grove City High School Wrestling Team to travel to Findlay, Ohio. The Wrestling Team has an opportunity to travel to Findlay for a tournament as well. This trip is planned for December nineteenth through the twentieth of twenty twenty-five, and students will miss one day of school. Trip expenses will be paid by boosters. After reviewing these items, I move them for approval.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
No, second.
Ms. Martindale. Roll call. Ms. Listany.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Ms. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes, I didn't travel in Grove City.
That's a yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on now to items for action on the personnel, Mrs. Martindale.
I'm still trying to gain my composure over here. There's a spider on my mic. You're lucky you didn't either, A, see my spider dance, which is something we're past.
I think leaning back and I was like, does she not like my memorandum? I don't understand.
All right, so I've got several things that we need to bring up tonight. The first thing that I do want to talk about before I get into my items for action is that we are having a transportation hiring event this Friday, October seventeenth, in this room from twelve o'clock until three o'clock P.M. Additionally, we have openings for full-time and substitute educational aides and bus drivers. And again, the district provides licensing and training things that you need to be able to complete that position. Custodians and cooks, plus we are offering a special bonus incentive for our substitutes this year based on days worked in those roles. For fifty days worked, you get a bonus of five hundred dollars. For a hundred days worked, it's seven hundred and fifty-dollar bonus. And if you spend for a hundred and fifty days, you actually, a thousand-dollar bonus. So that's a great opportunity to make some additional money. So please, if you know of anybody that is looking for employment, we would love to have them host them in this room on Friday from twelve to three to learn about those positions that we are hiring for. And then, so in terms of my items for action here for tonight's board meeting, we've got eight personnel items involving four hundred and ninety-four persons. That includes eleven certificated resignations for retirement, two administrative changes in employment, ten certificated change in employment status, three hundred and sixty-six certificated employments, two hundred and nine of which are supplementals, fourteen classified resignations, nineteen classified changes in employment, and seventy-one classified employment. And having reviewed those items, I do move those for action.
Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call. Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Listany.
Yes.
So in addition to that, I do have two messages of condolences, and I'm going to do these separately. My first one is Krista Stastation. She was a member of the Southwestern City School Board of Education from nineteen ninety until two thousand and five. And serving fifteen years on this board, Krista's slogan was "Krista for Kids." And her daughter was reminiscing about this with me, that she would take her on the campaign trail. And they would pass those things out, and she said that that was one thing that she always remembered about running the campaign with her mom. Also, Krista often spoke of the two things that she was most proud of for being a part of this board. And one of those things was actually being a part of the team that hired Hugh Garcia. She was very proud of that. And the second one, just being very involved with the designing and construction of a lot of the new buildings that went up during that time. Her daughter shared with me that it was a passion project for her to make sure that kids were being the top priority as they were designing and then outfitting those classrooms. So Krista did pass away on September twenty-third of twenty twenty-five. So in recognition and appreciation of her service to our district for fifteen years, I do put forth a motion, the Board of Education expresses deepest sympathy to her family and friends. And I will do another one here. Bill Williams. Bill began his employment in the Southwestern City Schools on July eighth of two thousand and two as a custodian at the Southwestern Career Academy. During his career in our district key service, a custodian at Finland Middle, Franklin Woods, Jackson Middle, Hayes Intermediate, Hope Crossing Intermediate, Park Street Intermediate, Derby Woods Elementary, and Highland Park Elementary before returning back to where he started at Southwestern Career Academy for the remainder of his service to the district. Again, in recognition and appreciation of his service to the students and staff of our district, a motion is in order by the Board of Education expressing deepest sympathy to his family and friends as Bill Williams passed away on September twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty. Learning of both of these, we definitely want to let those friends and family know that we care and that their contribution to this district is appreciated and will be remembered. We do put forth that motion.
Second, Peterson.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Listany.
Yes.
Ms. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. All right, moving on now for public participation related to non-agenda items. We'll have our first speaker is Mr. Bob Ruth on school operations. Nice to see you, why, you look good.
Hey.
I was told, I was told you have an anniversary coming up, is that?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Sixty.
Sixty is what? Sorry. Congratulations to both of you.
Sixty years she's put up with.
It's insane.
My name is Bob Ruth. I've been a resident and taxpayer in the Southwestern City School District for fifty-three years. I have a bit of history lesson for you folks. It involves the term fifth column. This phrase became popular during the Spanish Civil War in the nineteen thirties. As four columns of nationalist troops marched toward Madrid, their general boasted he had a clandestine fifth column hidden within the city itself. These secret supporters, fifth columnists, would attack loyalist troops from within the city at the same time his other troops attacked from outside. In my opinion, certain members of this board are modern-day fifth columnists. Your extremist confederates in the state legislature are attacking our public schools from the outside by funneling one billion dollars. That's B as in boy, billion dollars, in taxes each and every year to religious, private, and charter schools. That one billion in state tax dollars, our tax dollars, should be going to financially strap public schools like those of the Southwestern District, not religious and private schools. The formula your radical allies in the state legislature have designed is so unfair that on a per-pupil basis, private voucher schools get twice as much state tax money as public schools. I know that sounds unbelievable, so let me repeat it. The state's taxpayer-finance voucher program gives twice as much state aid to private and religious schools as it gives per pupil to public schools. This brings up the question. How does this unfair and lopsided system affect us? Because the one billion dollars in state taxes go to religious and private schools every year, our public schools will need ever-increasing property tax levies on homeowners to make up for the state aid that is being siphoned off to public schools. As Mr. Garcia warned tonight, and you approved the five-year projection, state aid will begin, to public school, will begin decreasing in two thousand and twenty-seven, I think I got that right, and continue to decrease through twenty thirty. The issue here is very simple. Do you want to continue? Do you want to continue shifting hundreds of millions of tax dollars to private schools? Or is that money better spent on public schools like Southwestern? Supporters of public education throughout Ohio have denounced the state legislature's extremist private school voucher agenda, but not certain members of this board? No, no, no. Instead, you support taxpayer-funded vouchers for public schools, for private schools, I'm sorry. You've even decided to withdraw Southwestern's financial support for a lawsuit challenging the constitutionality of taxpayer vouchers for private schools. Why on earth would you do this? You should be embracing this lawsuit instead of abandoning it. Board President Bosso, you and a majority of this board have obviously chosen private schools over our own Southwestern public school together. I've been waiting about five minutes here. Mr. Bosso, you and your allies on this board are attacking Southwestern public schools from within, in my opinion, just like those fifth columnists in Spain did ninety years ago. Thank you.
Quite a few years since I stood up here and addressed the school board. All new faces except for Hugh Garsside, I don't come to you. How've you been?
You look great, Sarah.
Oh, thank you. Well, Ruth, I remember you. We were allies on the same side seventeen years ago. But now I'm a seventy-one-year-old white male who embraces the cross of Jesus Christ. And first off, before I get into the Gospel of John here, first off, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak here. Secondly, I'd like to say that I admire this board's patience. To be able to sit here time after time during public participation and having to endure the verbal hostility that you've had to put up with. The naysayers have been very clear in stating what they're all against. But I've yet to hear any of them say what they actually stand for and what they actually, and what they believe the future of our district should look like. And with that, let's get into the Gospel of John. Now, get into the third chapter of John, and you'll know as I read that it goes a lot further than just the sixteenth verse. This is Jesus speaking. "No one is ascended to heaven but he who came down from heaven; that is, the Son of Man who is in heaven. And as Moses lifted up the serpent in the wilderness, even so must the Son of Man be lifted up, that whosoever believes in him should not perish but have eternal life. For God so loved the world that he gave his only-begotten Son, that whoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life. For God did not send his Son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through him might be saved. He who believes in him is not condemned; but he who does not believe is condemned already because he has not believed in the name of the only-begotten Son of God. And this is the condemnation: that light has come into the world, and men love darkness rather than light because their deeds were evil. For everyone practicing evil hates the light, and does not come to the light lest his deeds should be exposed. But he who does the truth comes to the light, that his deeds may be clearly seen that they have been done in God." Going down to the thirty-fourth verse. "For whom God has sent speaks the words of God; for God does not give him the Spirit by measure. The Father loves the Son, and has given all things into his hand. He who believes in the Son has everlasting life; and he who does not believe, who does not believe the Son shall not see life, but the wrath of God abides on him." And with that, I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Sarah. Moving on now to Paul Roberts on safety analysis and proposals.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try not to raise my voice or get out of anybody's way. What I'm here to talk about is, on September twenty-second, the board passed a motion to have the superintendent start receiving, from multiple sources, quotes to improve safety in schools. And I'm for that. I'm not against that. But I don't understand how in June, you applauded the safety committee report that you received. You applauded it, thought it was fantastic. And then, four months later, we're ready to sink money into something. And if you're going to do that, why not sink it into improving what you already have? I've heard you talk, and some of you others, talk about people walking the halls, checking doors. That's because the alarm system on some desk tells them the alarm's going off, but not what door it is or where it's located. So you have to send someone out there to walk those halls. Find that door, shut it. But we're willing to spend money on getting somebody else to come in and tell us to do the same thing. Buy a better alarm system. Put up some better cameras. Improve the lighting. I mean, there's common sense things that we can do besides sending out money and proposals that we don't have as a district right now. Your budget just showed that. And I'm not trying to be hostile to any. I'm just saying, let's look at our options internally before we go external. But you have a lot of them. And I think that if you need a better thing, Columbus Police, Grove City Police, and Fire are more than capable of providing you better guidance if you ask for it. And with that, I give you my time back. Thank you.
Hello, Robert Tucker.
On community involvement.
Hello. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Banks and Mr. Garsside. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Did you know that October is Bullying Awareness Month? It seems to me that we, the adults of this community, are the ones who need to take responsibility and expect children to be kind to others. Yet we as adults, representing this, you as adults representing the Southwestern City Schools Board, allow your own attorney to bully private citizens. A few weeks ago, I come across a video made with our Southwestern City School tax dollars by a lawyer that is currently being paid nine thousand dollars a month for his services as a family law attorney for an education foundation. I'm told it was played at a partisan event where Lawyer Tarazi was speaking on a panel largely promoted politics that hurt our school system as a whole and our students. Denise DeAngelo, you invited the community to come to that event, correct? However, and this was during a school board meeting. Okay, so you asked them to come. However, when they came, they were not allowed to stay. They were asked to leave. Now, in my opinion, Mr. Tarazi used his position within the district to provide legitimacy to that panel. And I believe that was with your permission, Mr. Bosso. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. In his taxpayer-funded video, the district, the educators, and an engaged parent were portrayed in an appalling manner. A manner in which I deem as mean, disrespectful, unprofessional, and very clearly bullying. He called parents' names. He made untrue implications. And he made fun of a parent with cartoon images. Perhaps this is why other parents were not allowed to stay and watch the event. Because you didn't want him to, he didn't want him to know what was going to be said and done. The mom that this happened to is a mom. She's very active in our district. She volunteers countless hours. I know, trust me. I'm at a different school than she's at now, and it's very different. She was very clearly portrayed in this demeaning video. She bravely stood here last month and acknowledged what was done. Half of you were so distracted, you didn't even acknowledge her. No one apologized to her. No one. Mr. Tarazi and one of Mr. Bosso's current running mates left the room. They didn't even listen to her. How dare they? I was taught, pay attention when people are speaking. I have watched videos of board members typing on their computer, writing notes, not paying attention. You don't have to engage with us, but you should at least pay attention to us. I have heard you made reference, and I quote, "the constituents who voted me in," end quote. That's correct. That's incorrect. Those are your blind followers. Your constituents are all members of the Southwestern City School District. The parents, the grandparents, the children, all of us, whether we have kids in the district or whether we don't. We are all your constituents. Yes, some believe differently than you. Some look differently than you. Some worship differently than you. Now, whether they voted for you or not, the people living in Southwestern City Schools, we are your constituents. We are the ones that should be represented. It is clear that some of you don't understand that based on the way that people that don't believe like you or look like you are treated by this board. The permission given to Mr. Tarazi to represent our district resulted in one active and dedicated parent of this district to be bullied. The ability to see when you do wrong, to be humble enough to acknowledge that you've done wrong, learn from it, and to take responsibility and apologize for pretty important qualities to me as a leader of the board and representation of our district. True leaders lead by example. You have failed us by the decision to not apologize to this dedicated parent volunteer for the actions of your attorney. Ms. Paul, I would like to personally apologize to you. I think it was sincerely and utterly horrific what was done to you. I want to thank you for your time and your effort that you dedicate to the children of this district. I can only hope that after the election month, that the nine thousand dollars that's paid to the district will be put to better use.
Actually, not going to speak after all. I was speaking on behalf of a family who went through a tragedy, and they have decided they're not ready yet, so I am going to hold off on that for right now.
Moving on to items for discussion. Any items for discussion on the board?
I do have a couple things that I wanted to bring up. Thank you. I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Harding at Harmon Elementary School for all of the hard work that he's doing over there and all of his staff for achieving four stars on the state report card through lots of work and dedication. They lowered their chronic absenteeism by over eight percent this last year. They're doing great things there. Also, wanted to make note that Monterey Elementary is partnering with Charlie's Kids, which sponsors the Children's Tutoring Initiative. DTI will train volunteer tutors to help with reading. Monterey is looking for tutors on Wednesday mornings from eight-thirty to nine-thirty and from nine-fifteen to ten-fifteen A.M. So if you have any community, family, friends who are interested in volunteering as being a tutor, Monterey Elementary School needs you and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on now to, we're going to go to executive session. Recommend the Board of Education adjourned for executive session according to policy zero-one-six-six. We discuss security arrangements, emergency response protocols, and strip system. Consider appointment and appointment, dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of a public employee in preparation for conduct or review, negotiating, or bargaining sessions with public employees. We don't expect anything after executive session, but you're more than welcome to stay. Thank you for coming tonight.